I'm going to go into this at 10:30, it was day after Saturday.
Yes, I do.
Okay, probably right, we haven't had any? We are on. Call this meeting of the Huron Board of Education to order and ask the business manager to note the roll call and ask everybody rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda at this time?
Move approval of the agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say no. Motion carries. We have our dates to remember, which is that we have the summer ESL, a summer school program running Monday through Thursday. This is the last week. It ends on June 30th. It runs from eight to one o'clock. We still have our summer nutrition program going on at the Huron Middle School this week. Breakfast runs seven forty to eight ten, Monday through Thursday. Lunch runs ten forty-five to twelve forty-five, Monday through Thursday. Then starting July one, at the Huron Middle School, there will no longer be breakfast, just lunch. Lunch program hours will be eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five, Monday through Friday. And we also have the Washington four or five center. This is the last week of the nutrition program there. Breakfast hours this week are seven thirty-five to eight oh five, Monday through Thursday. Lunch hours are eleven forty-five to twelve thirty, again, Monday through Thursday only this week. And there's no nutrition program in Washington after this week. That is it for the dates to remember. And we now move on to community input. Is there anybody present for community input for items not on the agenda?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
And I talked about this a little bit before you got here, Mr. Dure.
Can you step up the microphone, Kurt?
No, I have to.
That's okay.
I'll repeat.
Wouldn't bring a microphone to you?
I'll repeat it.
I think we can hand you a microphone.
Okay.
Okay. Real good. Thank you.
Do we assume that it's working?
There you go.
After the last meeting, you had a session with the administrators where you looked at last year's goals and gave an assessment of how those goals had been met. So I'm going to ask each of the members of the school board and the administrators if they would like to, to assign a grade to how they did on meeting those goals last year that were set by the school board. Thank you.
Well, that's a good question. Does anybody want to respond to that? Anyone have an answer off the top of their head?
Being someone that's now been back on the board for three meetings, as I sat and I listened to the administrative team go down through their goals, I would give them a strong B. And I think that some of the areas that, that may have kept it just in the B category were some things out of their control. Every goal that the board had put together last year, each administrator had spent countless hours, you could tell, on those goals. This isn't something hurt that they, the board makes a goal and the administrative team, a week to two weeks before they meet with the board again, rushes through to try to put together. This is something that they're continually looking at. And you can tell, as, as you go around the room from administrator to administrator, this is, this is very out in front of them every single day that they come to work. And I would say that probably some of the areas that they, they didn't quite get to where they wanted to, might have been in some of the student achievement areas. When you look at the goal that the board puts out that all students will read at grade level, to me, that's kind of like saying, no child left behind. All students will, will be proficient, and that's really a moving target. But what impressed me was, is the administrators knew which students weren't at grade level reading. And a lot of them had action plans put together with their staff on how to reach out to those children. And in that situation, some of it isn't the fact that they can't reach the child in school, it's that they're not getting family support to make a difference. And it just went from administrator to administrator to administrator that they were front and center. And if they were, and they were very honest, if they had a failure, they said, this was a failure and this was why. But nothing, nothing stuck out. So I'd say just kind of as a newbie coming in, sitting back and listening to it, I'd give them a strong B.
I guess I'll go next. I'm next in line. I'm with John, you know, the, the assessment part of it, I think that's where, that's where the most work needs to be done. And not necessarily on achieving better, but more understanding why we are, where we are. I think the whole goals process is a, is a work in progress. And from the, from the first year I was on the board to this year, I think we've, we've gotten better at just seeing where we are and knowing where we are and understanding the direction we want to go. And I think that's what the process is more about. Not necessarily just hitting our goals, but understanding the process and understand why, why we're doing this. So yeah, I think we'd probably be at a low A with, with our, with our goal process.
I'll go next. I would concur with what John and Garrett have said. Our administrators will take the goals that we developed this evening, and in the fall, they will put together their goals for the next year and present them to us. And I was very pleased with the reports that we received last week. Like the other gentleman said, student achievement is an ongoing goal that we're going to continue to strive for. And I'd probably go B+, A-, if we're looking for a grade to assign.
Excellent question, Kurt. Could you repeat the question, just to make sure I got the question right?
Two weeks ago, you had a meeting with administrators where you went over the goals that were set last year. And I'm asking the school board, assign a letter grade to how you think administrators and staff hit those marks.
Well, I, I may be tougher on the grading system than some, but I'll, I'll say a B to a B minus. And I, I think the, the administrators did a very good job of having the information that we asked for in the goals and working on those goals. But I have to say honestly, I think there's work to do yet on student achievement. And also, we, we need a little more information on the goal related to turnover and number of applicants, so we can see how, how we are in trying to hire and retain staff.
So it's nice to be last sometimes, so that way I can kind of piggyback on other people's comments. I would say I would divide it up in two ways. One, they definitely get an A for effort, in that, to echo the other comments, that they really do work on these throughout the year, and it shows that they have been, they have a plan to achieve these goals. Our academic goals are, of course, the top things on our list, and that's what we want to achieve. I would agree that the, the strong B, I think, is a good grade for the results, because they do have a very tough population in some areas, because a lot of our students are English as a second language learners. It is requiring them to read at grade level, it's just not realistic, and so that reflects in the scores, and so that can sometimes bring the overall picture down. And so we, as a board, I think, try and do a lot to dig further down into what they are doing, to make sure that the needs are being met. And our, we have a strong ESL program that is, that is doing well for our students. Just as an anecdote, I received a few compliments after graduation on the number of ESL students who were graduating, walking across the stage with high honors. And, and so that shows a lot of, a lot of growth for our district and a lot of, a lot of respect for what our program does for, for those students. And so I think that the administrators are definitely doing well with the goals that we set. I don't know, any, any of the administrators want to comment?
I thought it was important that the, that the board comment first, because I would learn from how they chose as well. I just finished this afternoon, actually, the, by mid-morning, finished the last of the, writing the evaluations of the building principles based on a system called South Dakota's Effective Principles Initiative, which piggybacks on the South Dakota Effective Teachers Initiative. And in, in this year's process, and this is, we piloted a little bit of it a year ago, but in the process, we rate our administrators on student achievement and on effective leadership. And so there are different matrices that you use to chart what they've done, how has it worked? And so I'd like to use a little bit of that language in answering your question. As far as meeting goals, there's a, there's a three-tier standard, okay? And it's meets expectations below expectations or exceeds, all right? Well, as, as long as we are, as long as we are identifying how far we have to go to meet the, the, the expected outcomes of our NWA testing, et cetera, we certainly are not exceeding expectations. So on the meeting expectations, is are we taking children from where they were to where they can be? And, and so there's an area that's called expected growth. Each student has a, a growth range of how far they should come. And I appreciate that the board watches very carefully. Are we meeting that expectation of how far each student should come? And I think that's a valuable part of, of what goes down. So the teachers have to report on every student to their, to their principal on how far did each student come? Then the principals have to report to the superintendent, which was what was happening in the last week, on how many of my teachers in my building, if I'm a principal, how many of my teachers, students exceeded their growth? How many met their growth and how many were below where they should be? And so at the risk of being too long-winded, if your goals are aggressive, then you should be constantly hungry at the end of it, measuring how far you came, not whether you completed them or, or didn't complete them. And so I, I think that, I think the board does a, has a correct balance between setting things lofty and being aggressive and not being so unrealistic that it's, that it's counterproductive and depressive to people to try to meet the impossible. And so I, I think that we've done some remarkable things, goals-wise. The academic achievement of our reading and math scores in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade now has a two-year trend, which shows there are some specific things we're doing there that, that we, that we can expand into the other grades. And so, long-winded, Kurt, I think the process is solid and that the, the board is receiving accurate information. And I appreciate what was said earlier, they also find, they also have reported to them what we have not succeeded on, and they have to decide, is that something to continue to pursue, or is that something for next year to cast aside, because it's not going to happen?
Thank you. We'll move on then to our consent agenda. The superintendent of schools recommends approval of the following. Board approval of new hires, we have Joyce Morris as a substitute teacher. We have contracts for board approval. Make sure I'm reading off the most recent agenda. I think one was added on here. Do we have one sitting in front of me? Is it here? Thank you. Okay. I knew there was one added on here. Shiler Holtrup as an assistant coach for middle school boys' basketball. Tim Headblum as an assistant coach for girls' tennis. Garrett Schmidt, assistant coach junior varsity girls' basketball. Then we have two who have their contracts revised for getting their master's degree, that's Brandy Knipling and Thomas Basler. And we have a contract with Aaron Melson for the eighth grade girls' basketball coach position. We have no resignations to consider. There is an attached, attached list of bills for consideration and approval. And we have two open enrollment requests, OE two, twenty sixteen dash zero three and twenty sixteen dash zero four for board approval. Does anybody wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Or have any questions on a consent agenda item?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. That motion carries. We will now proceed with celebrating successes in the district, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Nemlasek.
Thank you. Obviously, we're in the middle of the summer, and so that area is, is a bit quieter, and we've already talked about the goals process. As you know, we're going to explain that process at the Associated School Board and School Administrators' Joint Conference in the, in August. And so it was good to hear what each of you thought, and I took notes on that accordingly. I want to thank Sheri Nelson and Ms. School Principals, Mr. Taplet and Mrs. Willemsen, and, and all the staff that helped put on the, actually, a national-level conference that was held at, in the Huron School District last week. It was a conference on learning and assessment. There were three speakers who speak all over the nation, actually, and a couple of them from Canada, so all over the continent, on, on how to take, how to take how we assess students and turn that into strategies in order to change how we teach students. And, and so as you hear, as you hear words that are becoming a bit catchphrases, but whether it's customized learning or individual plans, you can't do any of that until you understand, how are you measuring each student, and then how is that affecting how you teach them? And so I thought it was a powerful conference, and I've seen some, some, already some preliminary goals set by a couple of administrators as to what's the next step and where do we go with that? So that would be a thank you to Sheri and the crew. They, they did this a couple of years ago, and, and they brought in several people from different school districts. I think there were seventeen to nineteen school districts represented, and, and about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty people that were in attendance in that conference. And the, and the content of it was, was exceptional. So I wanted to make note of that. And I'm, I don't have clearance on something else, so I'll give congratulations next time on that. Is that right, if I go right into the superintendent's report?
Yep, we will run into reports.
On the staffing end of it, we have a social studies opening, which hopefully we'll be able to process in the next couple of weeks. That's open because of Mr. Middlestat, taking, Rodney Middlestat has taken the reassignment to be the instructional coach at the middle school, which was, of course, Mrs. Nelson had last year. And that opened again because of the process ending with the assistant principalship and Jolene Koenigsky moving into the high school assistant principal. So we are looking for a social studies teacher, and we're also looking for a high school position. That can either be special education, which was how we advertised it from the beginning, or it can be certified in the subject area, and then we will have special education teachers write and monitor the IEP and go curriculum-wise, so that we can take two different angles at trying to, at trying to fill that. And the other thing that I would share with you, that I'm watching intently, the first grade enrollment and the total district enrollment. The first grade is right at the point where if enrollment would hold for another two to three weeks, we, we may look for a first grade teacher. We don't want classes to be different than what the board's targets are. Right now, the class size is about twenty-four point three or four, but I'm, I'm very, very cautious to make sure that the overall district enrollment reflects the growth in the, in the first grade, rather than to, to have a situation where we become overstaffed because we have one staff member too many at some other place. And each staff member with benefits, and the new package is about a $60,000 decision. And, and I'm overly cautious because of one of the changes in the new funding formula, along with all of the new monies, which created the salary package, which is more competitive, and certainly a, a huge increase from where South Dakota's been. But one of the caveats, reminding the public, is that there's no longer a two-year cushion when your enrollment drops. It used to be that if your enrollment came in in September and it was down, you got to average two years, which would, would reduce the impact of not having that state aid. Now, whoever you have on the, on the count day in September, that's your actual funding. And so I'm overly cautious to not miss that. But if we would see that district enrollment is holding, and so the, you know, right now the kindergarten class is over two hundred, and we graduated one thirty-eight, I believe it was. And so if those two numbers hold, then we would have, we would have a growth. If you take that times $5,600, we'd have plenty of revenue to cover whether we needed a first grade teacher. So I'm watching closely what happens to the enrollment, especially with what's happened with a couple of the major employers in town and some rollbacks. I'm trying to be cautious before we jump too soon on a teacher. And that's, that's my report, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for our superintendent? Seeing none, we'll move on to the first item of old business, the adoption of the student handbooks. I believe this is the second reading for the handbooks, which you have received previously. Does anybody have any questions or discussion on this?
Is there any changes from the first reading, or any changes that we should be aware of?
I don't think so. There was a couple of edited updates, but those were sent to you. I don't think there's any, to the best of my knowledge, there's not a change that was not highlighted last time.
I take it the activities handbook's in here, because Mr. Roderick's added a table of contents?
Correct. Correct. That's how it was explained to me.
So looking at the handbooks, the high school, middle school, and the activities have table of contents. Elementary still doesn't. Is that my recollection?
I don't think ESL had one.
No. The reaction is that when the, when the board said they liked the handbooks that had tables of contents, a couple of the administrators, and the board actually said it as, in future, please consider this, a couple of administrators said, I'll grab that, and went after it. Some did not. I did not dictate to them that they must go back and put a table of contents in, but it was so noted, and has been noted by people sitting here, that we'll continue to move that in that direction.
Well, I assumed that was what the activities one was, because it looked to me like that's all they added.
That was the only difference, yep.
That's what he put in his narrative. Correct.
Yeah, and that's, that's just a matter of making sure that it's accessible to the public when they read those handbooks and can find what they're looking for. So, any other discussion on the handbooks?
I would second that.
Motion and a second to approve the handbooks as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. That motion carries. And then we move to the next item of old business, adoption of the 2016-2017 budget. We've had the public hearing, I think, last meeting, and this has been on the agenda a few times here, so now we're, it's up for final consideration and approval. I'll ask the business manager if he wants to make any comments, or has anything at this time he wants to add.
I don't have any changes since.
I don't have any changes since we started talking about it in May.
I'd make a motion to adopt the 2016-2017 budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the 2016-2017 budget. Any further discussion on that item?
Just like to publicly thank Kelly for his hard work. Every year, he puts together a great budget for us. And he puts a lot of due diligence into the process. And we appreciate his hard work.
Thank you. Kelly, I'd just ask that you, maybe to refresh me more than anything, on the capital outlay, the large negative is because we brought the revenue in this fiscal year with the certificates and we're making the expenditure next year.
Correct.
So this year's, the end of 1516 is going to show a surplus on the revenue side that's being offset by an overage of spending this year.
Correct.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to.
Just wanted a question too. The other sources, the $365,000 of revenue, what also are the other sources?
That's the transfer in from the capital outlay fund.
Okay, is that the only thing in that's in that? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion to approve the 2016-2017 budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. And motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, can I go back and ask a question on the previous item?
On the handbooks?
On the handbooks, yes.
Okay. If administrators, as they are in, working on things when students aren't present, if an administrator wants to go back and put a table of contents without editing, am I seeking consensus for them to do that? Or would you just assume they waited a year so that you're approving that? I just want to check to make sure that if some said, well, I've got a little time here, I'd like to work on a table of contents. Are you comfortable with them doing that? Or does that edit what you approved?
Did I change the handbook? Can you just? Exactly. Yep.
Okay.
I think you're completely fine to add that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. Then, that is the end of our regular business meeting. We have a board goals-setting session that will occur, except for 6:30, but I'm guessing we'll probably get to that sooner. But we will take a little recess here and then reconvene for that work session. No further business or votes will be taken. This will be just a goal-setting session only. Any further matters to cover for the board? If there's no objection, then we will be in recess for at least 15 minutes.